Are you ready?
I am.
These papers are on?
No.
Alright, sorry for the delay guys. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and um call the meeting to order at seven oh five P M. Roll call, Laura Marlohe.
Here.
Lee Perriman. Nate Brewer.
Here.
Ashton Fowler.
Here.
All here. Invitation was provided by Nate prior to work session. Alright, and now we'll stand for the pledge.
Ladies and gentlemen of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and power.
Mayor Heidman, do you have a report for us tonight?
I do, Madam President, and at this time I'd like to take the opportunity to present each of you with a package for your information and consideration from the Earth Project. You'll find that entirely informational. Also, a tough thing of the current vacancies for the city of Solocaga. When we started this, we had twenty-four vacancies. Today, we have eleven. Administration Finance, we still need an accounting manager, one vacancy. Animal Shelter has one vacancy, they lost one employee. Building Services, there are no vacancies at this time. Municipal Court still has two, but we have tested three people and Amber will be interviewing them shortly. Also, the Fire Department is still lax, they have one vacancy. Police Department still has their six. Street Department has zero, and the Shop has zero. I would like to take this opportunity to, I saw Dr. Heller here.
Yes.
Congratulations, yesterday was beautiful. You would, you have to take it. Come down there. Tiffany was there, I know. It was a wonderful gathering, and what the spirit was just great. All the students competing against each other. Congratulations to Nicole Lawson for winning. And also.
Finally won.
That was very good.
Your speaker was outstanding, he needs to be known why.
We're actually bringing him back August twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, and he'll actually speak to all of our students.
Twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh? Yeah, he was outstanding, everybody needs to hear that message. Sure do. And also, B.B. Comber on the east side of your building. It's racing. Uh, they've uh installed a garden, a music walk garden. It's gonna be beneficial, everybody can walk around there and enjoy that. But it was dedicated to Dr. Ted Spears. And needless to say, what an asset Dr. Ted Spears been to this community through education and also the market best. He is from Solocaga. Goes notoriety both national and international throughout the world. It was so fortunate to have him and look at all the fine work he did. Dedicating that part to him was a wonderful thing. And thank you so much for all you've done. Also, there was one thing that came out of that uh that uh meeting, dedication with Dr. Spears. In an article written by Ruth Cook of Solocaga News regarding the dedication to Dr. Spears, she made a very profound statement about Solocaga. She says, "Solocaga might justify the dubbed, the little town that could and does." I appreciate that kind of words for our city, and I wholeheartedly agree with her on that. Tonight, as you heard from John Merrill, we are moving forward with our Senators and Congressmen. The amount of money is uh will become the Solocaga, but we will not, uh we will not know the exact amount until later. But we thank John for all he's doing for us, not only this year, but in twenty-twenty-five and looking forward to twenty-sixth and into the future, with our Congressman and our Senators. And I want to thank the Council for Chief Rondell Muse for supporting him in the request of his needed equipment. When we talk to S and P, questions will come up. They will ask things like, how can you get by with the police departments lacking six employees? What you've done tonight, providing him with materials, helps us to just, helps us to compensate for the lack of manpower. And I thank you very much, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Heidman. Um, also, I think um it's safe to come up and um give us a little briefing.
Margaret, do you want to speak?
About the Earth Project.
Yes ma'am, I know you guys are here, I don't, I don't wanna um go on without noticing you guys, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that, we do have a number of folks here.
Come on up, come on, we're excited, everybody come on up, whoever would like to go in. Ms. Margaret, I got nervous, I said, I was like, did I do something wrong, y'all brought y'all big guns, Ms. Dixon, I said.
We are, we are excited about the future for Earth, and um we have people here who, this is Isaac Jennings. We brought him back from far away to be a part of Earth as our organizational manager. And we have some other members of the.
Well, you guys come on up, so you guys.
Safe Board.
I said, everybody's waiting about the Earth program.
And the Earth Foundation Board, um please come, come up.
Yeah, so let's get everybody recognized, so we can get these faces out here, so we have all these questions, and they see y'all, and help us, they want to stop y'all in answer.
Nancy Dixon, as you know, our uh uh organization manager, uh I'm sorry, C O L. Linda Dixon, who works with our relationship and marriage education programs. Karen Harris, who has been around with us since.
Did you have?
About twenty-six years. Karen is retired as our CFO, but now she is our Grants Manager. Shawna Yates is over program manager for our early intervention programs, home visitation. Greer Visignani uh is, is a part, is an assistant to the operations, to Nancy Dixon. Uh Laura Strickland is on the Safe Board. Dr. Heller is on the Safe Board, John Parrish is, serves on the Earth Foundation Board. And um Russell Scruggs is our Chief Workforce Development Officer. And Mayor Heidman also serves on the um Safe Board of Directors. So we're excited to be able to present this to you. Uh, a lot of work has been accomplished over the last five years, we've been working on this Earth project. And Laura Heath is our um uh liaison on the City Council. And uh, and we are proud of the work that is being done right now. Uh, we are looking in terms of a timeline of starting renovation on the Eva Jane property in November, with a timeline of a year to eighteen months for completion. We'll also are developing our regenerative ag space and our early ed center and lab school, where we will be doing training for uh early ed uh and teachers and such. And we're working with a lot of different organizations and, and state organizations as we're moving forward with Earth. Um, we purchased the um twelve acres and the Eva Jane property Safe Ed, and Talian County Board of Education, along with Safe, uh uh was able to bring in one point seven five million dollars, it's already gone into the cleanup of the Addenville property, and that was through the Public School and College Authority, Talian County Schools. And so the Talian County Schools will be conveying a portion of that thirty acres to Earth, uh to expand the operations. Really looking, looking at, also, we're engaged in looking at new market tax credits to help fund the project this way.
Well, thank you for that update, I've been hearing a lot of good things about um Earth, and I know people are wondering, they're like, what's Earth? Everybody's talking about Earth, but.
And so um uh we have done, and you have in your packet, economic impact study, a preliminary economic impact study that was done uh uh by Dr. Samuel Addy, who is a professor at the University of Alabama. And you will see in that, in one year, uh the return on investment for the state of Alabama, once Earth is operational, is going to be in the neighborhood of sixty-five million dollars, so.
Wow.
Really is gonna happen. Not only that, this project is a forty million dollar project, that we have made a commitment, that those dollars will be spent in our community and in our region. Uh, we have hired a general contractor for the first phase of the project. Uh, it is Johnson Crease out of Birmingham, but they are partnering with some local contractors already, so that we keep our money that we've raised here in our community.
That's big, when are you guys expecting the north to go, though?
Uh, well, with the Eva Jane plant, if, if renovations go as expected, and we are able to start November, December, or January, you're looking at a year to a year and a half.
Wow, that's amazing.
So it's not that long. If you haven't been by, we'd love to take you uh to take a look at uh the property. Uh, again, we have done a lot of cleanup, uh we actually have some of the um, the architectural drawings. Ryan Coleman is our lead architect on this project. And uh, and we have some preliminary drawings, um I think everybody will be very excited about landscape, architecture as well.
I'm excited, maybe when we get the new fans in, we can take a ride around town and then.
Well, we, we can take you now. So, uh yeah, we're, we're, we're pretty excited, uh and we have a lot of amazing partners that have been involved in this or otherwise.
Well, thank you so much for that update, we really appreciate you guys and everything that you do, so we're excited.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Margaret.
Mayor, um do you have anything else?
Well, that's all.
Okay, so um number six, I need a motion, um I need a motion by a Councilmember to adopt the agenda. Uh, if you ask me.
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Alright, approved minutes of regular work session held July second, twenty-twenty-four, need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Approved minutes of regular City Council Meeting held July second, twenty-twenty-four?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Approved minutes of regular work session held July sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four?
Motion.
Don't hurt me first.
Second.
Second, my actual follow-up, all in favor?
Yay.
Approved minutes of regular City Council Meeting held July sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Alright, best for old business, new business, number eleven, action that is necessary to approve Resolution number eighty dash twenty-twenty-four to authorize the allocation of gas tax revenue for the fiscal year twenty-five transportation plan must be adopted no later than August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. City Clerk Treasury to read Resolution number eighty dash twenty-twenty-four in two minutes, if there's anything to add.
There's nothing to add.
Can I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Action that is necessary to approve Resolution number eighty-one dash twenty-twenty-four to authorize notice of public hearing to rezone property located at five-six-two West Fourth Street from its current M X dash two limited, mixed-use district to institutional one district for August twentieth, twenty-twenty-four. City Clerk Treasury to read Resolution number eighty-one dash twenty-twenty-four in two minutes, if there's anything additional to add.
I would just like to correct, the institutional is not one, it's I.
I.
You're right, one, but I have nothing to add on that.
I am so sorry. I heard you need a motion to approve?
Motion.
I heard Lee first. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Number thirteen, action that is necessary to approve S and P Global Ratings totaling thirty-five thousand, six hundred fifty dollars. Funding will be from bond proceeds. Need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Ah, I did that wrong. Let's, let's do this one over, y'all, alright? Okay, so I need, I'm gonna restart this one over. Action that is necessary to approve S and P Global Ratings totaling thirty-five thousand, six hundred fifty dollars. Funding will be from bond proceeds, I need a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion. Second.
Second, four, all in favor?
Yay.
Okay, if unanimous, I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Laura, all in favor?
Yay.
Sorry about that, guys. Number fourteen, action that is necessary to approve Madison Lights for special events license for fall festival event, October nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Number fifteen, action that is necessary to approve Palmer Place to receive funding, funding totaling ten thousand dollars. Funding from S P D earmarked money. I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Number sixteen, action that is necessary to approve budget amend amendment for animal shelters totaling one hundred, one thousand three hundred dollars from G L O one O dash five four O dash four two five oh one dash zero 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 to G L zero one zero dash five four zero dash four two zero zero one dash zero zero zero.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
I got a question on this one, do we have to list what line I were taking it from, or is the number okay? Does it have to be, the numbers okay? Number seventeen, action that is necessary to approve Solocaga Police Department to apply for Edward Byron Memorial G A G J A G Fund in the amount up to one hundred and fifty thousand for flock cameras. There is no city match application due August ninth, twenty-twenty-four. Need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
He said. Number eighteen, action that is necessary to approve and authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement for substance awareness and detection services between the Solocaga City Schools and the Solocaga Police Department. Need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Number nineteen, action that is necessary to approve and authorize the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding between Solocaga City Schools and the Solocaga Police Department for school resource officers. Need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Action that is necessary to approve the purchase of an O C R three six zero capture kit with floating license for investigations totaling thirteen thousand, two hundred eight dollars, funding S P D from earmarked money. Need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Uh, had a motion from Lee, and a second?
Second.
I heard Nate. All in favor?
Yay.
Number twenty-one, action that is necessary to approve the purchase of four portable radar signs totaling thirteen thousand, four hundred seventy dollars. Funding from S P D earmarked money. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Number twenty-two, action that is necessary to approve the purchase of six stock stick kits totaling three thousand, two hundred twenty-eight dollars. Funding from S P D earmarked money. Need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
I heard Laura. All in favor?
Yay.
Number twenty-three, action that is necessary to approve Municipal Court refund to Robert Aswell Big totaling five hundred thirty-six dollars. Need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Heard Ashton. Second?
Second.
Got Lee. All in favor?
Yay.
Number twenty-four, action that is necessary to approve Solocaga Parks and Recreation reimbursement for invoice from Church of the Highlands totaling ten thousand dollars. Funding from parking rig earmarked money. Need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Action that is necessary to approve, to, action that is necessary to approve, to approve Resolution number eighty-two dash twenty-twenty-four to purchase two W I P twenty-twenty-four Ford F-150 Responder Super Crew four-by-four pickup truck, state contract, T one nine one L totaling one hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred twenty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. Funding from S P D earmarked money as specified in Resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-twenty-three totaling one hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred twenty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. The price per super truck is seventy-nine thousand, three hundred, sixty dollars and sixty-seven cents. This amount is to fully equip the trucks, City Clerk Treasury to read Resolution number eighty-two dash twenty-twenty-four, if there's anything to add.
I would like to read the whole thing, as we just did this, to make sure there's no errors or any more mistakes.
Yeah, because.
Thank you. Resolution number eighty-two, twenty-twenty-four, resolution authorizing the purchase of two vehicles for the police department. Whereas, the city of Solocaga has determined the need to acquire two Ford F-150 patrol vehicles. And whereas, the total cost for the purchase of two Ford F-150 vehicles, including outfitting, is seventy-nine thousand, three hundred sixty dollars and sixty-seven cents. Per vehicle amounting to a total expenditure of one hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred twenty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the city of Solocaga as follows. The city of Solocaga hereby authorizes the purchase of two Ford F-150 vehicles, including outfitting under state contract, T one nine one L, at a total cost of one hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred twenty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. Funding will be provided from the Solocaga Police Department's earmarked funds as specified in Resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-twenty-three. The mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute all necessary documents and to take any other actions required for this purchase, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption, which is today, sixth of August, twenty-four.
Okay. If to consider at this meeting, I need um a Councilmember to introduce.
I'll introduce.
I was taking that.
Alright, so now I need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Got it from Lee, all in favor?
Yay.
If unanimous, I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Alright, a motion approved. Number twenty-six, action that is necessary to, to approve, to approve Resolution number eighty-three dash twenty-twenty-four to purchase one two thousand eight something pumper truck from Williams Apparelies totaling two hundred fifty-nine thousand, eighty-seven dollars. Funding from Fire Department earmarked, earmarked money as specified in Resolution number twenty-three dash twenty, twenty-three totaling one hundred forty-three thousand, six hundred sixty-one thousand, forty-eight cents, and special projects reserved totaling one, one hundred fifteen thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty-two cents. City Clerk Treasury to read Resolution number eighty-three dash twenty-twenty-four.
Resolution number.
Go ahead, I was just gonna um say, to make sure we knew that all the Fire Department had left in their um balance was the one hundred forty-three thousand, sixty-six thousand, forty-eight cents, and we pulled the rest out of the special projects.
Correct.
Okay.
So they have no more earmarked money.
Okay.
Okay. Resolution number eighty-three dash twenty-twenty-four, resolution authorizing the purchase of a two thousand eight something custom pumper with internal ladder rescue style compartment. Whereas, the city of Solocaga has determined the need to acquire a two thousand eight something custom pumper with internal ladder rescue style compartment, including a list of modifications identified as attachment A. And whereas, the purchase of this fire pumper truck will include necessary outfitting and modifications to meet the operational requirements of the city of Solocaga. And whereas, the total cost for the purchase, including outfitting, is two hundred fifty-nine thousand, eighty-seven dollars. And now therefore be it resolved by the city of Solocaga as follows. The city of Solocaga hereby authorizes the purchase of one two thousand eight something custom pumper with internal ladder storage and rescue style compartment at a total cost of two hundred fifty-nine thousand and eighty-seven dollars. The amount of one hundred forty-three thousand, six hundred sixty-one dollars and forty-eight cents will be provided from the Solocaga Fire Department's earmarked funds as specified in Resolution number twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three. The remaining balance of one hundred fifteen thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty-two cents will come from the Solocaga City Special Projects Reserve fund. The mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute all necessary documents and take any other actions necessary to approve this purchase. This resolution will take effect immediately upon today, sixth of August, two thousand twenty-four.
So if to be considered at this meeting, I need a um Councilmember to introduce.
I'll introduce.
Alright. I need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
I need a second?
Second.
Alright, Laura. If unan, oh, all in favor?
Yay.
Alright, if unanimous, I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Okay, alright. Action that is necessary to approve July twenty-twenty-four payroll totaling five hundred twenty-five thousand, six hundred fifty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Alright, number twenty-eight, action that, action that is necessary to approve fiscal year twenty-twenty-four accounts payable invoices totaling four hundred twelve thousand, eight hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents, need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Alright. Time for anyone to address the council, no actual be taken at this meeting, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for record prior to addressing the council. Do you guys have anything to say? Alright, well, I have one thing that I wanted to say, and I just wanted to make sure I went on record saying this, so that um we would all know, you know, where I stood. So as councilmembers and as city leaders, we hold everybody to a certain standard. But we have to make sure that we're also abiding by that standard, and the reason I'm saying all this is that we, we can't post things on social media and that show the city in a negative light. We have to not do that, and also, too, I wanted to um address the um, the thing that was posted about, you know, Laura, you requested some information from Alex's office, and I wanted to go on record to say that Alex isn't the person that you should blame, it's me. I told Alex not to do it.
You're not her fault, I thought we just cleared that up. Mayor's her boss.
But, but what I wanted to tell you is, I told her, I asked her not to do it for Nate and Ashton as well, because we're shorthanded, and we can't, we just can't have our own agenda. But if there's anything that you need, or any kind of documentation, just whatever you need, just export in the work session, and I promise, we as a whole will make sure you get it. But we want to just get out of just, you know, we don't want to post things on Facebook, we don't want to shine the city in a negative light, and we all have to figure out to get on the same page some sort of way. But I also wanted to um also mention this, according to ordinance number twenty-one, eighty-one dash sixteen in section eleven, in its number eight. Anytime we request anything, as councilmembers, if we request anything from any city employees, and there's um some sort of misconduct or anything in that line, we're report, we're to report it to the mayor, and it has to be kept confidential. So even if we, even if I. I came to you, I came to you.
Yeah, you came to me about something else.
Yeah, but we have to keep it confidential, but I know, you know, I'm not the best leader, but I'm doing the best I can. But anytime you guys, just let me know what you need, um I'll do the best I can to get it for you, or just export in the work session. And Laura, you're really, really smart, you do a good job at, you know, working for your people. But if you see something that you think is wrong, share it with the rest of the group, so we all can, you know, try to figure out how to, how to get it together, how to fix it together. I just, I, I just don't want this to be hard for anybody. But just remember that we all fall under this resolution, and we do have to abide by, and there is a certain code of conduct that we have to, we have to uphold, and if we don't do that, then a censorship can be put in place, but that's not something I want to do, and I don't think any of us want to do that. But I promise, whatever you need, just export to be on the work session, or export in the work session, and we'll get it, and we'll figure out what's going on together.
Thank you for everything, I appreciate it. Um, I do feel though, as, that people need to know there's some things that's going on, and we don't, we cut, we put, we push things under the rug a lot of times, so the public's not aware of what's going on at different times, you know, just like we did tonight with things, and I think to move the city forward, there's some things that we need to be open and honest about, that we have not completely shown transparency on, and I feel like, you know, my constituents ask me questions about things that they hear rumblings of, there's a lot of talk at Booker's in the mornings and stuff, and I mean, I knew about the censor, I knew you were gonna do this, from just talk out and people running their mouths everywhere, so I um, I appreciate, I value what you say, and I appreciate you and your role.
And thank you for that, but again, if there are some things that you have a question about, just bring it to us as a, as a whole, and we'll do our best to um, you know, to take care of it, so, and I also want to say this, you know, you're. So, and I also wanna say this, you know, your, your feelings aren't valid, but your, your behavior is not.
But what, there is other people who have, look at how behavior, though, I'm not the only one who has look at how Winn was treated at the last meeting. It's been brought to my attention by constituents and everything, that Winn was treated very poorly.
But we're council members. We're elected officials, and we're almost up under the mayor, like, we're at the top of the totem pole, so we do have to, we do have, we do have a certain code of conduct that we have to abide by because, because we are the leaders.
It does apply to everybody, though.
It does, it does.
And it should be enforced for everyone.
Alright, so is there anybody else?
I make a motion with you.
Alright, so having no further business to discuss, um, I motion that we adjourn. Alright, so we.
I gotta.
I need it here.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Alright, second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Yay.
Alright, time of adjournment, seven thirty-six.